Ready, pledge?
Pledge.
Yeah.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I had no recording in the middle of my routine this morning. There's me off. Oh, is that what that stack was?
Yeah.
Alrighty. This is our office center.
Yep, she's back there.
They don't have anything? No exonerations, no? Nothing. Sweet. Alright, payroll. Standing on that. Move to approve second half payroll.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. In favor?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Ruth, vouchers and invoices.
One of them was an AMI purchase, but...
Was that that sixteen thousand? That county law?
It was like seven thousand stuff, I think, total.
And then the sixteen made the difference.
Yeah, it was a toll. Okay.
Yeah, that's what that was.
It was about our...
Alrighty. We pre-vouchers and invoices.
Make a motion. Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Oh, did we get minutes?
No.
Next meeting, okay.
No, we'll have a next meeting. State settlements. Jackie Blaine Guthrie, Barbara Eloise Williams, AKA Eloise T. Williams. One was the fiduciary commissioner handled it, the second one. I move that we approve these.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. This is Michelle, right?
Yeah.
Alrighty, Ruth. Last Matt talking, figure it would be better to do this nine-one-one center's budget anyway.
And then the next thing is...
Okay, has that gone through the parks board yet?
Sort of.
Have you guys seen her?
You guys, what are your thoughts on the Boomer Ball Field ownership issue? Because right now, you know the scoop, like right now, it's, it belongs to us, but it, we want to transfer it to the Board of Ed, but if we do, it might revert back to all that.
So we're, we're all, we've all talked with group about that. They had questions that I'll have in front of me, that group all answered, that I sent back to the park board, and there were no other discussion or answers past that. So I would say that we would be in agreement with the commission decide to have a...
With what the, well, the Board of Education, you got the recommendations from the Board of Education, right about the maintenance?
Yes, I did see that. And I, the questions that we had were not in regards to that. So I'd say that we would be in agreeance with what they're proposing and the more the commission would be in charge of upkeep.
Well, yeah, in short, they were going to do all the, all the easy stuff, but anything, any major failures, we were going to be responsible for.
And that is...
It's going to pay direct operations to pay pass.
Hey there.
And he's, he's the one that sent the email about what they were going to do.
Okay, what, what is an example of something really bad that could go wrong there? That, that would fall under our side of things?
The things that you were talking about, that we, that we did not want that responsibility for, is if there was a plumbing problem.
Mm-hmm.
If there's a plumbing problem above ground, we can handle that if we, because if it requires coming around, picking up, putting it along, that is not something that we want to take responsibility for. On the power side, very similar to that. So if there's a failure, it's, you know, the, the major gear that works, you know, the, the service, that's not something we would take the force for. If there is an electrical issue within possession stand, within, you know, where the batteries are, things like that, yeah, I mean, we would be more than happy to address that, since we have electricity back to do that. But if there's a major failure at the actual service, you know, that's not something we would want to...
What about upgrades, like lighting and things like that?
Lighting is not really something that we would want to upgrade. We've talked to the school, they play their games during day night hours, so lighting is not something that we were, where we would want to worry about.
Okay.
As far as the bleachers though, we would like to see those gone. We would be willing to put in some new bleachers up to code. We would like to see that old fence gone, it's roughing and kind of falling down. We would like to put in a new screen that would protect the bleacher area from foul ball, only your baseball game.
Oh yeah, I've been hit by one there at that field before.
Exactly, so, but we'll do the deep care there, so we would like to get rid of the bleachers and we would like to put in some new bleachers, that's, we would, we would do that. I talked to Sunny, and when I, and when I mentioned that day, I was, if you find somebody that will pick those out of there, I don't know how people want to do that. That's a lot, and somebody ought to be willing to do it. There's a lot of stuff there that somebody could use if they wanted to, or recycle, or salvage, or whatever. But that's not something we would do. We would then put some of the bleachers in their place. Actually, we would put them up on the hill on the flat part. I know, people are already calling me, but no. The commission has to make a decision about anything here. So if they want some big benches and things like that, we're not, that doesn't even happen. Okay, we would just go put the bleachers up on top, you could see every type of thing, you could see different left there. The screen would go in front of that, or the netting would go in front of that, that's what we would want to do. We would also like to work on the access to the places a little bit. There are some of the roads that kind of into the field, where they're washing out and raining a little bit. We'd like to clean those up rather than work on the gates a little bit, so that we can secure the place a little better, get a little better access when we need to, or even when you all are good to the parts. And right people needed to get in there and get access to that, we would make it easier. That's if there's, that you would fix, that's not something you do. If there's a repair that needs to be done, you know, or something like that, that's actually what we do.
Does the board still own all the school above?
We're getting ready to put that up for auction.
And how long has it been unoccupied?
It's, you know, I don't know the answer to that. It's, it's been unoccupied several months. A while, I don't, I don't know the exact...
Well then, there's really no use for those gates to be opened at all unless there's a ballgame.
Yeah, if no one else is going to use it. Exactly, it would be nice to just close it all that way.
Yeah.
We're agreeing with that, I, I don't have a problem with that at all. And again, we could do locks and whatever that, that are accessible to the security.
So the, the turn that shut in that gate, is that where the buses turn around, or do they turn around somewhere else?
For the head start?
For head start, is it head start?
Is that where they turn around?
Yeah.
It used to be, I don't know the things to do.
Well, then we'd have to make sure that that's, that's still...
Let me pose this question, Anthony, I need your attention for this. Rather than an MOU, why not a, a nominal lease or something like that? I, I mean, it sounds more, what you're talking about is more like what would happen when you lease property, rather than, so I mean, like even if it were like the gun range people, a dollar, you know, a year or whatever, you know, if we did something like that, then you will have the authority to make all those decisions about the fence and that kind of stuff, you won't have to come back through us. We would be responsible for major things, and that could be outlined in the lease. And then you guys would be responsible for upkeep. In fact, we would have to outline the upkeep you've, you've said, because that would be a little more than a typical lease would require.
It's a little, definitely more than a typical one, but again, that's just, that's what we're willing to do.
Okay, so, so you don't care what the vehicle is, I mean...
It's not necessarily that, I, I don't know the answer to that question, and I'm not going to speak for the Board of Education.
Okay.
Okay, so there are five numbers there, they're going to have to decide that, okay? We would have to take that proposal to them. I know that the, the thing that we were talking about, and that I was getting, given, you know, basically the permission to talk about is an MOU.
Okay, so...
But I, I'm not opposed to taking that idea on the east side.
It's, yeah, it's really, I mean, it would give you all the freedom you need to do what you need to do with the property, and we could outline the things that, like, that's, that's what made me think of it, is, is when you were saying about blocking the road, and I was thinking, well, you know, if it, if there were a lease, then that would be an issue.
Well, mostly I was, I may have missed, missed looking. Mostly what I was looking at was access to the field itself. There was some places there where the restaurants are, there's a gate there, that's not the, the best gate. We want to make sure that people are out there doing that, that's an empty, which is what they're wanting to do, you know, that there. So we would want to clean that area up and repair that, and repair that road access. And there's one behind it also.
Yes.
Okay, so we would like to work on that area a little bit too, and make it, make it so that we can access it when we want to, and we'll make it inaccessible, as inaccessible as possible. People get into everything, inaccessible as possible.
Yeah.
For others that should.
And, and again, those kinds of things are far more enforceable by you with a lease than, than with an MOU with us, than you'd have to come to us and force anything or to do anything. So my thoughts, you know, and I ask my colleagues are, you know, that we come up with a draft lease based on the information you've given us and email, and then in this hearing, and then we can propose that, we can get it back to you to propose to the board and see if they want to enter into it. In fact, we might be able to do it through the parks and recs folks, but I, it sounds, to me, a lease sounds like the best mechanism to, to make this agreement, and then that way you guys will have full use and authority over the property.
We got to talk through that.
Okay, sweet, and, and feel free to do it in intervening time, in case they have any terms they want to add to it, but, but we'll go ahead and, and come up with something to propose, that's the best way usually gets started.
My concern is, moving forward from this point, we still have a baseball field that's going to need to start practicing in a little while.
I understand, and, and so I think there's a secondary issue here. One is, one is the vehicle by which we cooperate, through which we cooperate, because we can't, we, we wanted to deed it to you, we can't. We don't really want the responsibility for it, but we don't want the kids to lose access to it either. So we've got that, the lease or MOU or whatever we end up doing, and then we also have the issue of the bleachers, which is an issue either way. So I think we need to vote probably on both the bleachers and the, whether we're going to do a lease or whatever.
I've voted to a lease, and, yeah, I agree.
At a minimum, we're removing bleachers.
Right.
Yeah, because there are a lot.
Right, and, and, and I'll tell you, you know, my, my interest, I think our interest is to have an agreement with you. The form of it is, you know, is, will be what it is. But, but I do think the bleachers, those bleachers need to be removed, and you guys can go ahead and get moving on that.
Realistically, certain processes change. Documents, I'm just calling, reasons that...
Right, which, which legally will give you more flexibility to enforce rules. That's really the distinction.
So, and, are, are, you said a nominal fee?
Like I said, like a dollar a year, like something like that. You know, like that's what the gun range people, you know, rent for. It's just something, because a lease, there has to be an exchange, but, but, but that's it. And I don't even know if we need it, if they're doing that kind of maintenance on it in lieu of anything, maybe we don't even have to structure it, do we?
Well, I mean, the lease should contain a dollar a year, whether or not it pays.
So...
So renewable annual.
Yeah.
I mean, we can structure it however the board wants it to. I, I don't think we would want to go, you know, generally there are one-year agreements as well.
Well, that's how the, the government's kind of confined to one-year agreements, but we can let it automatically renew without, you know, any renegotiation unless one of the parties gives notice. So that's typically how that would work. Yeah, I mean, I don't see us fighting in the government about notice, I mean, it's just, it is what it is.
You saw it, you terminated thirty days notice too.
Right, yeah, so, pretty easy.
I'll be happy to take that.
Okay, sweet, so I move that we pursue a lease with the Board of Education for the Boomer Ball Field.
Sure.
All those in favor? Aye. And then you said the costs of removing the bleachers, just under five thousand dollars? Forty-seven?
The city tried to call a few people, it's one person.
Forty-seven hundred.
They're, yeah, I think they're like steel, I think, like...
They are, they are.
Yeah, now are you needing them to remove some fencing too, is that what you're saying?
Well, there's that section of fence that's attached to the...
That's attached to it?
That's all, that's basically the screen.
Yeah.
You have a foul screen like that.
So are those the same bleachers that have been there since the beginning of time? Okay, because I, that's what it was like when I was there, because I got a black eye through that fence.
They've been there.
Incident.
And there, there didn't used to be a field in right, I mean, a fence in right field, because I ran through it.
Okay, so...
So you only do the bleachers and that section of fence that's attached to the front of it?
We are about to vote on that. So I move that we allocate the funds and person, and/or personnel to remove the bleachers that are dangerous and the fence that's in front of the bleachers at five thousand dollars or less.
So I just wanted to see what you would say, I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, there we go. And as far as getting, Anthony, can you either draft a lease or farm it out for us? And Ruth, can you make sure Anthony has the terms that he set, MOU?
Just a tight, little tight timeline.
We're going to remove the bleachers and the fencing that's right in front of the bleachers.
Yeah, make sure you tie down your new bleachers.
Up to five thousand dollars.
So there'll be four or five four-wheelers down there trying to pull it up the road.
Yeah. It's right in front of them, I mean, it's, it's like the, it serves as netting, it's backstopping for the...
Yeah, the backstop.
And this, you said up to five K.
Yeah.
What happens if...
If it exceeds five K, we'll just have to revisit it in here. But the estimate, we have an estimate. And if you want to coordinate that with the board's council before they see it, that would be helpful, but... Alrighty, thank you, thanks for coming. Oh, here, I have a copy.
I gave it to you.
You did?
I gave you my copy.
Okay. Okay.
Amy wants to print that letter, the gig ready letter. She had it all three signatures.
That's better.
Yeah.
I'd rather most of our letters have, since they're coming from us, have all three signatures. Yeah, it's, yeah, it seems lazy, others, it seems like we're not...
And then the one that's...
They're in sync.
Have you ever...
No.
Did you get my drawer?
Yesterday's meeting turned me off.
It was long one.
And then a certain Oculus.
And then I was...
She is a bad influence.
But it's fine.
It made me punch a, a pictured frame off my wall. Alright, well, I was in a, in a fight right there, but I was trying to break a glass, and, and then I heard actual glass break, and it was, it come off my wall. I was like, well, this is a little real for virtual reality. Little less virtual, well, no, because actual plastic break on my floor. I thought we already approved this thing.
Now they're not approving it. So all you gotta do is like to approve it and we'll do that.
Okay, well, I move that we approve the letter to the mayor's about gig ready.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. I thought we, I could've sworn we did this last week. Oh, that's what it was.
So we could put it on...
That's what it was, if I've seen it before, I'm like, no, I've seen this before.
Like you did in the Shimble or something like that.
I know, yeah, I thought we had done...
Yeah.
Oh, that's what it was, it had the wrong date at the top too.
Right.
We'd already reviewed it. I guess I need to move on anyway, right? Oh no?
Number five on the back. There's a separate, I mean, there's a separate.
I don't have, I don't have that.
I need it.
John and I don't have it. Oh, I moved to postpone the appointments to the URA to March second. Jeff Proctor's out of town, well, actually, he's going to be out of town for a while. But they have a bid out, the, the reason for my motion is they're going to be getting some property bids in, the closing date, I think is the twenty-sixth or twentieth of February, anyway, it's end of February. And I wanted to get somebody from the URA in here to kind of give us an update on how many bids they got and the nature of the bids, so I'd rather make those decisions after we see what's going on and what the plan is for the property. So I move that we postpone it till March second.
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
And then the last thing is, Parks and Rec Board to discuss shelter fee increases.
Alright, come on up.
So we have two proposals for increases. I guess the first one is the... This month, we are asking for ten percent increase on all camp agreements. So we do camps based on the number of campers, so one camper, fifty campers is a certain price, and so on and so on. The biggest jump would be our highest camp, which is up to two hundred campers. The increase would adjust that to a hundred and fifty dollar increase. The other ones are less significant, yeah, and it's just due to rising costs. Um, the second one is shelters. We are proposing an increase on shelter four and five by fifteen dollars. And the stage, which is right when you come in at ten dollars, that would make all of our smaller shelters all flat at sixty-five dollars, and then our bigger shelters would be a hundred, a hundred and fifty. So it kind of levels out all the shelters instead of having random numbers here and there. It costs the same to have all the shelters, like maintenance wise, they all have the same trash cans, power, water, so making them all the same feet. We are not adjusting any camp deposits, the image or hotel, hotel packs. It's just the number of campers and the number of...
Is the increase on the tax agreements tied to an increase in maintenance costs or anything like that? Or is just to make it competitive with what's going on out in the community, or...
Um, I think maintenance is probably the biggest reason, and I, I could not say in my position when last time we had an increase was.
You don't know either? Okay.
It's been a while.
Not on the camp, we did very short prices, um, twelve, sixteen. Five, fifteen dollars. Twenty-five dollars in shelter one, it looked seventy... It was seventy dollars, a third, shelter one was a hundred dollars. And it's, your pockets on, on the left, when you first come in, you see, and the last one on the right is...
One of the biggest.
Yeah.
And shelter six, it's also a paper. They hold the same amount as shelter one. Those two are after a hundred dollars, these are red colored. Where a reunion is a good feat. We've given a whole lot of weddings, we've booked them every Saturday, y'all, like the...
That's great news. Will you try to come in here every few months to update us on what's going on out there? Just because I love hearing it, I mean, it's good to hear.
I feel like I've been here every...
Well, you are here, you are here a lot, I was, I meant Wayne.
Yeah.
Like, you know, I, I'd just like to hear like the good news, because you know, when you're about the pool and all the maintenance and the lifeguard issues and stuff, but, you know, and, and we'll, we'll see things. We knew the light, the lights and the Halloween thing were a success, but, you know, we don't hear things about the bookings and stuff, and that, that's good to know. Was there a reason the prices were staggered like they were and not consistent as Diane's recommending?
I also have no idea.
Could it be preference of what people want?
That's what I was wondering, if it's like location or something?
Yeah. So certain people want certain, we've written that there, certain people want certain...
The Louisso's family prefer certain shelters.
Okay, you know, I'm, I'm, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, the pricing, I mean, I'll, I'll honestly, shelter four and five is right in the bottom. The closest to the swing there, so me, that would be a more...
A good one for the kids, yeah.
To be the lower.
Yeah.
You know, if you look at it that way. Uh, the stage pricing, the fifty-five dollars, and the stage is, as you come in, the campaign will left and the stage is going to right.
It's the one that's actually covered with walls, and it has some...
So all in all, it, to me, again, if you're looking at what you're giving...
Desirability.
More than, you know, the, the lower, so...
Well, I mean, you guys might want to track that a little bit, but I know most places I go, like they're the same size site, it's going across the same, it's just first camper, so if you don't get there in time for the good one, then you're going to take the next best.
A lot of people understand, of course, you always have some of the... Anytime there's an increase in anything. I mean, these folks get it from eight in the morning to dark. It's all they really, they stay two hours.
And you don't have options for half-day rentals or anything like that at this point?
Not at this point, it would really, I mean, once you, usually everyone, they're around two o'clock.
My family rents a lot at Battle Run over there at Summersville Lake, you know, right by the dam, and we always get that one shelter that overlooks the dam, and of course, it's the best one, because you can get down to the lake, you can see the lake from there, but it costs the same as the others, you just have to be there in time. But, well, I'm, I'm fine with these, I, I move that we approve.
One second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Done. Thank you. Thanks for everything you're doing. And I'll see you soon. And that's it for exhibit, right? We'll take a five-minute break.
Yeah, whatever.
Five-minute break. Morning, Michelle.
Good morning.
You guys take out.
Number three was on the posted agenda, but not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Um, state letter regarding county here.
Yeah, it's not ready. Yeah, of course, yeah, do whatever. That's actually the way it should be for this exercise.
Don't be making this wrong.
Number three wasn't on yours?
No, we didn't post it.
It wasn't on yours?
No, we're not doing it.
I know, she made it sound like it wasn't on there.
No, she was asking if we were moving it, because we didn't make a motion to move it or anything.
Alright, got it.
So I'm confused, was the post fee on there or not? Number three under the exhibit.
Um, I'll just make a motion after we reconvene to move it. That way, that'll just clarify where...
Where were you saying it was, Michelle?
Well, number three, it's the letter to the, to our...
Yeah, but she's saying something like that is on the posted, but not...
That happens in here a good bit. It would be on the, the agenda, I get in the email, and then when I get in here, it gets changed. And so I didn't know.
But it's on what I gave you.
Well, that's what I was looking for. I didn't, I couldn't find it in the packet.
It's in your old packets, I tried to put your exhibit list further down with the exhibit list stuff, did you find it?
Yeah, it was okay, I just, I just didn't know, there it is.
Okay.
For sure.
What? Oh, is he really? Are we on mute?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he started again, I've seen your fashion passing, I'm here, I'm now saying...
He'll probably get it out.
Really?
So he started, and I said, here we go. I don't know what we could, I mean, you would do everything together.
I don't know, I mean, I, you know, I've actually... Are we going to postpone hers, or are we just going to take it off?
We can, I mean, she gave it to you, and if you have questions, like what starts and all of this stuff, you can have a...
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so our next agenda item is the budget presentation by the circuit clerk, Debbie Hendrick, and she is out. And we are going to, I guess, I just moved that we remove that from the agenda until she places it back on.
One second.
All those in favor? Aye. And Sheriff Frilly has been kind enough to show up early so we can get started on his, ready?
Yes, ma'am. If I get going too fast, y'all tell me to slow down, because I started drinking black coffee and I'm like wired for sounds.
You already talk fast.
I know, so I'm trying to slow down.
And I am without hearing aids, my charger's not working, so...
Alright, before we go into the budget stuff, I was going to go over some information that, about my concealed weapons, my shared assets forfeiture state, and our federal and stuff, just to let the county commission know what's going on with that. It, it's not in your folders, I just did this here just recently, I did put it in your back, I made copies of it.
If you will, I appreciate it.
Right? And I got notes all over it, but anyway. To start out, from collections this calendar year from January to December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one, and concealed weapons, because we all know that the price went down, we used to get seventy-five... And concealed weapons, because we all know that the price went down, we used to get $75, now we get $25 per year. So I received $19,191.01, sheriff asset forfeiture, which is state charges and stuff like that, I brought in $27,667. And then on a federal, we still owe $27,000, but we brought in $48,864 on federal charges that we have one deputy made arrest. We got $60,000 from this individual and our percentage was the 48,864. So that's what I have for this fiscal year, um, not for, you know, calendar year, calendar year.
So is the 27K that, the money that didn't work, didn't get filed?
No, I'm good that, there was $44,000 that has not been filed and Anthony and I have talked about that. It's not gonna go, I can't say all of them are not gonna go away, but we're looking at approximately. Forty, $44,331.25 of losing. But Anthony and I have talked and he said there's things that he can do still afterwards, working with his office, that the counties could still see that money going to the county commission to make people pay for their jail bill costs. So it still could be a win situation, it doesn't stay in my monies to use, but it be used for the county and Anthony's did work going at and letting us know. But $44,331.25 I'm losing on my asset forfeiture, state assets.
Yeah, the overwhelming majority of that sum was money that was seized in.
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
I was gonna, and I got it broken down, Anthony, I had Anna do this for me, we had several in. 2019, all the way up to 20, and then again, 2021, everything has been filed, not all, but majority of them have been filed. So.
And Anthony, what's the, you only have a short amount of time to file those, right?
Well, here's, under the. Yes and no, there's two provisions in the asset forfeiture statute. There is one procedure, which is referred to as the civil asset forfeiture. The statute specifically says those have to be filed within nine days. The administrative asset forfeiture procedure does not have a statute of limitations. Now, the catch is if you proceed under the administrative asset forfeiture and the respondent files. An answer and says, I contest the allegations. At that point, you cannot proceed under the administrative asset forfeiture commission, you have to convert it to a civil asset forfeiture. And if, of course, the statute of limitations is raised, we're, we're dead.
Right.
Water, and in some of the, some of these cases, the amounts are. 200, 300, 400 dollars, and we're just simply not gonna do asset forfeitures on those. But what Michael's referencing and what we're, what we're going to start doing is cases where. We have that small amount, at sentencing, we're gonna ask that that money be applied to jail. There's a statute that allows us to recoup up to 30 days for jail costs.
Good.
So it comes to $1,500, our threshold for filing asset forfeitures is a thousand. And, and, you know, if somebody comes to me and says, hey, we seized 850 bucks, we're fine. It's just one of those things.
Depends on what they seize and.
Yeah, in the circumstances, but we're not, obviously, we're not gonna do $1,400 or $200. But rather than hand that money back over to the criminal, we can at least try to use it to pay the jail.
So you're gonna do that standard, not just in these? Even for the nominal cases?
If the defendant, if the person we've taken money from is ultimately convicted and if they can spend time in jail at their sentencing period, we're gonna ask that that money be applied to offset their.
That's a great idea, where'd you find that statute? That has to be like one of those nebulous in the middle of nowhere.
To be honest, if memory serves, I've read about it in the Charleston newspaper, forgot about it. And then an issue came up back around, November, December, we looked into it and I found it. And it's like, okay, let's, let's see what happens. Judge Ewing, yes, ruled that if we file them, they'll grant them. I mean, there's a requirement in the statute for the defendant to be readily be able, through the near future, be able to pay the money. So I think. We have drug money, sheriff's asset forfeiture account or anybody's asset forfeiture account, that has. The defendant can't really argue that they're not readily available, that this one's on their table.
Okay.
Well, just let you know, but we're gonna, you know, we came out with a plan, my chief deputy worked with Jennifer and Anthony both. On these state charges and stuff that, the paper trail, so we can still try, if it's over $1,000, we'll go after that money for asset forfeiture and then it's split up. The prosecutor's office gets 13%, and we get the other 80, 90% of it, that can be used for different things. So we still want that way, so we, we streamlined it a little bit with a lot of work. And I've helped this losing 47,000 dollars, I about stroked out, but anyway, getting back to the budget stuff.
What types of stuff do you normally? Like use those different funds for outside of this?
I was getting ready to go right to.
Sweet.
So in the concealed weapons for calendar year, I spent $23,769.60 of that. There's things by code that I have to use that I don't want, that's behind the card, update my equipment for concealed weapons, by code I have to use for that. Also, I bought four laptop, or four computers for our office, that's the two major things. When that sheriff's asset forfeiture, I spent $4,712.33. Again, I sent Deputy Tomlin to a seminar because he done very well this last year getting monies for us. And, and also some other things, small here and there, a hundred dollars here, $200 here, purchased some shotguns out of it. The federal asset forfeiture monies, I spent $14,125, so a total of $42,606.93. That it didn't come from the county, it came out of one of these three monies. And, and anywhere, to answer some of your questions that Allison, I bought the drug task force, I bought them, they gave me $13,000, I think, for $14,000 on one new truck. That I paid $10,000, and then they also gave me, I think, $4,000 on a used vehicle and I paid $3,000 on that, that was my two big purchases through the federal access money.
Sweet, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, so that's really it on that, now we can get right into the budget, guys.
Questions?
No.
On that, okay, thank you so much, that was exactly what we needed.
Yes, ma'am. All right, starting out, y'all should have, should be the same order me, hopefully. So the body armor, this year, we need 12 deputies that will need replacement. Plus two additional, which I just purchased another one with a new deputy that came back to work, so I'm looking for a total of 14. So the cost of that is $10,900, and that's something we have to do by code. But this is the only year that it's big like this, if you notice throughout the years, if we hire some deputies here and there, it's usually five to six that we have to purchase. This is one that I tried to fix a little bit, but we still have 12 deputies that need replaced, then the shelf life on these best are five years.
What's the, what about the weight bearing, are you guys?
I'm gonna get to it, Miss Allison, we worked about it, girl.
Well, you told me too much in advance and then I know.
Yes, ma'am. All right, overtime, the overtime has not been raised for my office since I've been sheriff and, and before then. It's right now at a 70,000 out of general budget, 60,000 out of the law levy. I'm asking for a $15,000 increase on the general budget and $25,000 on the levy to move that up. Because the pay has went up for deputy sheriffs and stuff throughout the years. On the K9, they not asking for any increase, they got a real nice donation year ago or so from a person that they found that was deceased. But the family called them up to Pittsburgh and it was a large amount of money they got within that, but it's dwindling down because they purchased a lot of stuff throughout the year with that. Regional jail, it was 1.4 last year, Ruth and I talked, I said, how much decrease you want, like she said, make it safe, take 100,000 off of it. Now, we know by Anthony talking, right now, we saving over half a million dollars in the budget, which is awesome. So, you know, y'all gonna make that decision, it's in my line item, don't know why, but it is. And we are working on some stuff, I talked to Ruth, going back through the cities to make sure stuff is paid. I've got all the paperwork printed out, we're gonna sit down, my chief and my captain, I go sit through and make sure everybody's been charged properly. If not, you will see an invoice in front of you to sign off on, get our monies back in the cities. And that's the ones that are arrested and are charged through the cities, so you gotta make sure we do that.
We do something similar with the animal control as well.
Yes, yes.
Get this.
We can.
Because that, that's something, I know when Ruth and I both talked to the Raleigh County folks, and Beckley funds a lot of their animal shelters there. And we, we have at least a couple of municipalities here who, that have the money to help fund.
Yes.
Our shelter, and I think they both do, actually, the two with the more money. Yeah, but, but I think we need to take a closer look at that because.
And you know, the county commission, I turn this into Ruth every month that our animal control officers give, I made them break it down to see how many we pick up out of cities and what cities, not just picking up dogs.
Right, I know.
Throughout the county, so we started doing that, so I think that can help us a lot.
Oh, yeah.
So we started doing that, too. Firearms training, hallelujah, we found some ammo, we've been waiting from last year's budget that you approved $20,000 towards materials supplies. We are still waiting on our rounds coming from Florida for our duty ammo, but we have got our practice rounds and some other stuff, so hallelujah, we found it.
What are y'all practicing with?
Not just ball rounds, because it's a lot cheaper. But I had to jump on this, too, because I about fell out of my chair when the chief said, Sheriff, we can pay $780 a case right now for that, for duty ammo. In 30 days, federal was charging, gonna go up 17%, make it $920 per case, and that's our price. So I did ask for an increase of $10,000 in this year's budget, because we know ammo is gonna be a lot, and I'm gonna be honest with the commission. That was bare bones last year, this is kind of bare bone, but again, if the county commission approves this, I'm gonna jump on it early. So we are not stressing out like we are now, because I'm telling you, right now, we have no duty ammo, we have nothing to practice with, we have nothing, we have qualifications, we have to do by law. So I did find that, well, I didn't find it, the chief found it, he, matter of fact, it's a lady that's local, too. So she was able, she's like the broker between all these different ammo people and stuff, so she was able to get our ammo, so thank you for approving that, too. All right, vehicles, in last year's budget, county commission did not approve any new purchases during the regular budget meeting, but did purchase three new cruisers. And they are done and they was delivered yesterday. So we've been waiting for stuff to come in, but they were delivered just yesterday, matter of fact, to the park, went and picked them up, so thanks to the park. This year's budget, I'm asking for four new cruisers and one new Tahoe. And it's from state bid, the total cost for all five of them, if you would approve them. Be 171,708, that's just the price for the vehicles alone. Equipment for the vehicles, if you look on it in the second page, number seven, to, for the police interceptors. That's $14,505.19 per vehicle, that's to outfit them with all the equipment and everything that nowadays we need in vehicles. And if we went with Tahos, you're looking at a cost of $10,229.04 for Tahoe. Total cost of that, $68,249.80 to outfit these vehicles now. And the prices went up and, and Ms. Ruth asked us to get some prices and the person that we're dealing with is the cheapest one around. So, and, and we getting good equipment, guys, just letting you know. Also, body cams, we purchased our 10 here just recently, they finally was able to get them out, the prices went up a little bit. But I'm, again, I think we need to keep doing this, keeping our body cams up to par, so I'm asking for 10 more body cams again this fiscal year. And the cost is 525 each, so total 10 of them, $5,285.21.
When you guys, when you guys get new equipment, do you provide the prosecutor with like the software and stuff that they need? You have to get any extra license so they can.
On the body cams?
Yeah, so they can view the.
Just for the purpose of, for the purpose of keeping everybody straight, there's, nobody can get in and deputies can't even look at it.
No, 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 I meant like when you give it to them for case.
No, they don't need nothing special.
They don't say the MP3 or something.
Anthony's office calls and they ask, usually Captain Campbell, they ask the chief, Michael Cypher, who's the person in charge of all that, they download it and send it to him.
Okay, sweet.
That works good on it, and we did change them up, like I told the commissioner last year, there's a lot of lawsuits, so we're away from the infrared stuff. Because people saying, well, the police officer seen this, why didn't, why didn't they do this? So we got away from it, all attorneys said, get away from that. Purchased all long rifles are in, that y'all approved last year, so that's good. Shotgun should be in this week, I'm purchasing them myself, they're not coming through, I'm using one of the asset forfeiture money or sealed weapons, whatever, it's like $6,000 and some dollars. So we're gonna need dual mount racks in our cruisers for our deputies. It's better than laying them in the sea, laying them in a truck and they go to pot. So I'm requesting 20 dual weapon mounts for the cruisers, the cost is $495 each, and that's include shipping. So we look at $9,900 to be able to outfit 20 cruisers for the dual mount, so you have your shotgun and your long rifle right beside you and it'd be locked up and all that good stuff.
Are these in priority order?
No, no, not, not per se, Allison, I, when I, when I go through this stuff, well, in a way, yes, because number one thing, there's safety for our guys and girls. The body armor's gotta be on the top, and then overtime, you know, it's just the way I did it, because when I go through my budget, explain a little bit more to you. They all important, but no, ma'am, to answer your question, no, it's not in the sixth quarter. I'm just, yes, sir.
On the body armor?
Yes, sir.
I remember when I first got here. Five and a half, six years ago. Guys weren't getting body armor, and that was one thing that, that we really changed at that time. I'd like to see you go ahead and continue to order the body cams and the body armor together. So if you need eight or 10, make sure you put those both on your list, because those are two very important things to have.
Yes, sir. And Allison, I don't want to jump the gun, they just recently just got me that you was asking about the weighted vest, we've been trying them out. You know, it's gonna cost roughly, I don't have it in here because they didn't have it all to me. But I'm looking at buying that myself this year to get them. There's a lot of them that deputies don't want them, and there's a lot of deputies that want it. So I'm looking anywhere between $10,000 to $12,000 to purchase, and that's the vest carrier itself and all the gadgets go along with it, isn't that about right, Keith? Right, just for the best, so that's what I'm looking at spending that way, but I did not put in my budget, if I have to buy it to get it, I will, or come back to the commission and say, this is how many deputies want it, if you want to do it, we can. All right, and the last thing on my cover sheet before I get into the budget, it's, I mean, the rest of it. I'm asking for pay raises for deputy sheriffs and all employees within the sheriff's office, there's 52 people and one vacancy, I've got more vacancies than that. It's, it breaks down to $308.01 a month or $3601.01 per year, and that would make the starting deputies, and that's why it's an odd number, at $40,000 per year. Breaking down salary, the financial cost of retirement, we looking at a total of $219,441.10. And broken down even further, you look at 99,9 something for levy, the 119,486.26 out of general budget.
Where, where are those numbers?
It's on the bottom page of the.
On the bottom of that page.
Long coffee today. And then going on, this explains everything about the replacement of body armor, who needs it, also with the invoice one there. This is our current department fleet as it stands right now, it's minus the three. And I know you got a question, John, this is your baby right here all the time.
Yeah, I know. Chief Rod, have you guys seen how much was put into the maintenance on the vehicles?
Are you talking about the new, the 10 that we just purchased?
Yeah.
Last year.
Yeah.
I, I know of two that was at the dealership for several months that was under warranty, but just the regular maintenance, we'll change some brakes, that's nothing major.
Okay.
The costs has went way down, I know, I didn't get the, that from the park commissioner, but I can, I will present it for y'all during y'all's budget meetings and stuff.
All right, because that was a sheet that, that Rod and I really used to figure out exactly, will four vehicles covered or do we actually need six?
Yes. And we will have the numbers probably, we can give it to you today before you walk out the door, we can call Wayne and say, hey, can you print out that on there?
Yeah, because that, that helps making that decision. Also, I mean, unfortunately, we have had some accidents. With her vehicles, about had one in here over her chair.
Yes.
But. How many, how many cars were totaled of our cars?
The last vehicle was totaled, Cody, uh, was a Cody Holstein, there was a few thousand.
Is it two thousand nineteen? So it was one of the newer ones? And were we able to replace that? Okay.
We got money for it now. It's, and I don't know what the commissioner, what it. I don't know what, how it was spent. Yeah, it's been a couple of years. Now we do, I will let you know this, Commissioner, we do have one where one of our deputies was on a call and that's where he, he still is off right now with injuries, where he jumped out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And now it's traveling everything, but the door, this is how crazy it is, because I went straight to Ruth when I found this out. We can't kind of go nowhere. They said it might be next December to get a door for a vehicle. Now, used ones, junkyard, whatever.
That's with everything right now.
So that's crazy.
Why do we still have a two thousand thirteen?
Well, we are trying to get rid of them as they go and Wayne and I talked and, and the chief also. With these new three vehicles, we're gonna start moving stuff and get rid of all this stuff.
Okay.
That's, that's junk and shouldn't be going on the road. Um, like one of the ones right now being driven is by, um, Deputy Burgess. Who's not a certified officer. Um, he's in one of the unmarked that, that's. It can't even be used to police work. It's a reconditioned thing. So if he don't run calls, he don't do nothing.
That's that old Victor.
The black one out here.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Alright.
But we are, and that's the plan. We should not have any crown vics on the road, period. Once these three, we figure out who's going, what, knock on wood that we don't have any other accidents or anything like that. Other one we should have. Would be one that transport uses, um, Rick Brown, but they own the transport people in it. That's just getting here and there.
Okay. Alright. Once, Rod, once you get that one paper. Let's sit down and go over that list, please.
What do you, I'm, I missed that. I'm sorry. I was writing myself a note. I missed what you were asking.
On the, on the cars, they have the oil and stuff changed at the park.
Right.
And then we look at all the repairs on the vehicle to see. How close the actual cost of repairs are versus what the actual cost of the car is right now. And that way we can determine is this two thousand thirteen still in good enough shape to be in service? Or do we need to replace?
Just know what happened was a couple of years ago, we had a vehicle. That had twenty-seven thousand dollars in maintenance.
Okay.
But we was, been blessed to be able to get rid of a lot of cars here in the last couple of years, you know, we didn't get. I don't know where we'd be if we didn't get them tender off the back, guys, and that's just being all honest.
Um, I have another request of you, Sheriff.
Yes, ma'am.
On the pay raises, could you, um, send us the breakout between deputies versus your other staff?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And I have that too.
Okay. I figured you did, but I, it's not here, so I just want, I'd like to see it.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, um, again, the first one, I'm on this page now, if anybody's with me or lost me or whatever. That's the breakdown cost and the state bid for the cruisers. Um, again, if we would ask for four, the cost of them are a hundred and ninety-one. Four sixty-four fifteen, you're looking at forty-seven, eight sixty-six each for the cruisers that deputies drive. The next one is for the Tahoe with the state bid in there. They got some of these on the ground now. You're looking at a cost of forty-eight thousand, four ninety-seven oh four per, um, Tahoe.
I wanna clarify something before you move on. The reason I asked deputies versus staff is not that I think anybody's worth more than anybody else. It's more because we're looking at how to retain and recruit our deputies and that's a different issue.
Yes, ma'am.
In my mind than, than merit-based employment raises, which I think are also valid, but. But that, that's just in case anybody was listening, thinking that I think one employee is more important than the other. That's not true. I'm just trying to figure out. How we can, um, because that's a greater expense in the long run is recruiting and retaining, as you know. And that's been an issue that we've all been concerned about.
There is a longevity, longevity.
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 Yes, and this set by state code, what, what it has to be, and we do go above that. Two hundred and forty dollars a year.
Two hundred and forty dollars.
Yeah, that's automatic.
What does that mean?
In other words, every year they get increased to two hundred and forty dollar rates, no matter what.
Oh, for civil service?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't pronounce it.
Alright, the next thing on there is the body cam price, the invoice of the ten body cams. Um, the breakdown for Rocky Ford for the dual weapon mounts. And now the salaries of deputy sheriffs and stuff throughout the state, that's the page I'm on now. We have one that all the deputy sheriffs did.
We're trying to keep up with you.
Well, I've been keeping up until just now.
Well, I just went through.
I have.
I have not. He lost me.
I'm lost on that.
Specifics ago.
That's what I'm saying. I, I, I don't see it. I was looking for it earlier and I don't.
Wait, I haven't.
Maybe somewhere else. Yeah, go ahead, take it, buddy.
No, I got an extra one I can use.
That stapled all them, but you had to get together.
Yes.
I went ahead and stapled them, so. Yeah, well, that's, I kept this stuff in this hole.
But here, I can.
Like I was looking for it because that's one of the things I always.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Well, here, I got extra.
And I was, I was trying to keep everything in order, so you. Alright, thank you.
Alright.
And all this is together, right?
Yes, sir. Alright, um, the Western District Sheriff's Association, we went through, we broke down for county. What the starting salary is and what it is after they come off probational one year. So that's all the counties throughout the state. There. It, about this one, we're thirteenth in population size, we're sixth in geographic size, we're ninth in department size. Thirtieth in starting salary, sixteen and nineteen in past one counties in salary. Thirty-second in after one year salary, eighteen and nineteen past one county. Um, currently, again, like a salway, we have a chief deputy plus twelve deputies on the general fund and then twenty-three deputies are covered by the levy. So. That's a little breakdown in that. Now, go to this next one here and I added our surrounding PDs and stuff within our county. And these numbers are wrong now, just so y'all know. Um, on this page here. I highlighted, so the number one paid county in the state, which we all know, we can't. Go with Harrison County, Clarksburg area stuff, that's your side currently as we're not grand this. Oak Hill PD is at forty-seven thousand, five ninety, but they just got a pay raise. Their starting salary now is fifty thousand, four hundred. If you go down there and look, Fetville PD, who was number thirty-six, they just got another five percent pay raise. It's already took effect last month. So that number's wrong.
So what's the Fetville number?
Well, it was thirty-eight, four eighty after one year, so five percent pay raise. I didn't, I just found that out.
So it's the after one year, so the starting is still the same?
No, five percent all across the board. That's the way I understood it. Yes, ma'am. And then Oak Hill has eighteen officers. And if you count the chief, they're at nineteen. Um, Fetville PD right now is at eleven, but they got approved to go up to thirteen. And it, and I know Commissioner Louise has asked many times about this, so on the law enforcement one time, on that very front page one, that the state did. It has the number of officers for you per.
Yeah, I was looking, yeah, in the square, yeah, I was looking at that, yeah.
And we are, again, commission, we're very blessed that, what scares me with everything's going on. We're very blessed having a law living in this county where twenty-three deputies are covered, because if not. We wouldn't have eleven, twelve, thirteen, whatever we could afford. But that's a breakdown and you know, I brought this up to commission before. My job is to take care of my men and women. That's all my employers, employees, and then we as a gather, take care of citizens. But really what got underneath my skin and y'all three know this, is when Nicklas County, that we have always been above them and they surpassed us. And that just, uh, this goes through me.
Do you have the numbers for Somersville and, um?
No, ma'am, I did not. I didn't. I just did our local right around us in our county, man. I can get that for you, but I'll tell you this, when I called Jay and told him what Oak Hill's making now, he said, well, it means I gotta go back to work. Cause they make good money up there too, so. Any questions on the breakdown?
They got twenty, they got twenty, they only got twenty deputies in Nicklas County.
Right. And, but they don't have no levy and it all, they pay for all that. Yeah, new coverage up to four o'clock. And we got twenty-four seven. And we paid for thirteen out of our general and twenty-three and eleven, which we're very blessed, that's what I was saying.
Speaking of that, um, might be a good time to raise the fact that your expense of providing service to the town of Smithers is about to increase.
Well, and, and again, um, Commissioner, I don't know, we, I hope it doesn't. I mean, we haven't got anything from the city yet. Now, my wife who works for the Board of Education.
We did, the county did.
So y'all did get it?
We did get it.
Charging deputy sheriffs to work in the city, Smithers.
Well, that, you know, I'm hoping that's not true and it's my understanding from some calls that Anthony made that. It may have been a mistake that they, you know, didn't omit. Um, sheriff's office, um, sheriff's department, but, um, we need, I think we need to make sure.
Well, I think, Commissioner, I think if that happens, that they're gonna charge our deputy sheriffs to answer calls within their city and to be able to work out of Smithers. Then if we answer calls in their cities, now I'm upset again. If we answer calls in their city, we need to charge them a flat fee and what. Answering their calls within city limits of that.
My guess is they didn't think it through, but I just wanted to raise it because it, because it happened here and it. It does seem like they just were thinking of everybody who's employed. They delegated it and the letters went out, but, um, I'm hoping we'll be able to resolve it. And I didn't wanna point that out.
Are not aware of it, what they doing, are they charging a rate to work? If you work inside a city limits of Smithers. And you're not a resident of Smithers, they charge you. Fifty cents a week to work in there.
The employee is charged fifty cents a week and then, so, and we currently provide what, four deputies down there? We cover the midnight shift.
Yes, ma'am.
In the valley.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, at least a minimum for Smithers.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
See, I don't know if anybody understands, but we don't, the county, the sheriff's department does not have to do that.
Uh, and, and I understand that totally.
I mean, I, from very beginning, that I'm not saying we don't wanna serve people, but really.
Uh, yes, sir. I understand you, Commissioner, but I mean, and again, you know, to talk about some stuff, the reason I just went with Montgomery. And, and, and Oak Hill, Mount, Mount Hope got a nice raise too. Um, and all, and Fetville is because. Anstead is all deputy sheriffs, except one, they work second jobs up there, even our chief, the chief police in Anstead is a deputy sheriff. Also in Dolly Group, we have one deputy working down there. There were just two officers, and then Smithers, nobody works there or at Montgomery. Alright.
Okay.
Moving along here. This three sheets, the first three sheets that I gave you. Is with no pay raise. This is what the minimum that I have to have to run my office, because just like Commissioner Louisa said. They do get a two hundred and forty dollar automatic pay raise on a year. For longevity. And that's, but this is no pay rate per se. This is something we have to by code. So that's the minimum amounts it would take. Um, for the sheriff's treasury office, that's my salary included and all that stuff. We look in for the cost of five hundred. Five hundred and twenty-three thousand, oh fifty-eight, forty-five. Um, for the tax office and my secretaries within the sheriff's office. Um, one thing I didn't touch on, um, county dog warden. We are, uh, patrol officers. We were able to hire two. Their salary's at twenty-five thousand dollars each. And we're looking at the cost for them, uh. Seven one thousand, four oh five. Now, we did not put in for overtime for these two young ladies. So I did request and I, I, I should put that on there. I just see my numbers here. I will, I am gonna ask for five thousand dollars just to cover overtime right now. If they work overtime.
It's in there.
I'm talking about on that front page, Commissioner, when I was one, I know, I'm talking about the very.
That, the original.
Original.
Showers.
Okay.
Um, but I am asking for five thousand because currently what happens, if they work overtime or if they called out, we just give them another. We let them off early at day or something, trying to make it work, but both of them, Michelle and Casey, both are doing a great job. Um, no complaints. They work hard and, and they're doing, really are doing a good job. But so that's, first one is what minimum that I need to run my office. Go to the second one that shows the pay raise on there. And, and the very percentage wise, you're looking at anywhere from, the lowest paid person within my office is twenty-four thousand, five hundred. That's two tax deputies. They're looking right at fifteen percent pay raise, if that goes into effect. Um, they would go from twenty-four thousand, five hundred up to twenty-eight, one oh one. Um, the lowest percentage of that would be eight percent. Um, with the cost of living, I'm not gonna bore y'all, because you've heard it from everybody. You, you're smart enough to know what's going on in the world. Um, the two county dog wardens, you're looking right at fourteen percent pay raise with that. Three thousand, six hundred and one dollar pay raise I'm requesting. You go into the second page. Um, uh, out of the general budget, you're looking anywhere from the lowest being six percent. Up to ten percent, which is Amy Ferris, had bring her up from thirty-seven, eight, nine, nine to forty-one, five hundred with her work. Deputy wise, it's six percent, the highest being majority of everybody else's eight percent pay raise. Um, the share process, that's one's nine percent, that's Christian Tomlin, one's eight percent for Brian Fernandez. But that's just the way it works out. Um, and then you go into the levy fund, everybody's right at eight and nine percent, except, except. Um, Lanier, Rose and Goodson and McMillan and Burgess, they're our youngest deputy, they're lowest paid. And again, the starting size is at thirty-six thousand, three ninety-nine. That would remove them up to. That would make that sorry, forty thousand dollars even, but with their longevity and stuff, it'd make it forty-one thousand, four forty on that. But the starting side would move up to forty thousand dollars even. On deputy sheriffs. And that's an increase of right at ten percent, like I said, nine point eight. And then the two tur- transport officers, um, Mr. Brown, he makes a little bit more than, um, written. So one's getting twelve percent, one's getting thirteen percent. And then the rest of this stuff is broken down for line item that Ms. Ruth says the state office makes us do, then I do my own. So Ms. Ruth would know that this is what the minimum would be on the right. On each, every one of these, that's what I requested.
Oh.
With the pay raise and then it puts the total over here. So if you want me to go through each and every one of them, I can. I mean.
No.
I don't, I mean, y'all can read that, but it, it goes from minimum, what's required to run that office at line item. And then additional, what I'm asking, the majority of it's pay raises, um, for everyone within my office.
I wanna, I wanna ask something, just to educate me.
Yes.
When you ask for a levy increase, like how's that work with you or Ruth? I don't know.
When, when you say.
Like, it, it, there's somewhere earlier you had it broken down where you wanted.
Oh, how much money?
Thousand more from the levy and fifty more. How, how does that?
Well, the answer.
Is it already there? Have we already collected it or?
The levy comes in and it's all tax based too.
Right.
And, and that's why I said, there's a lot of things could happen that scares me to death. Um, everybody talking about property tax, talking about this tax, talking about that taxes. I know it's gonna have to be voted on by the people of this county, uh, state. Um, it scares me. I'll just be straight and honest with you. If that would pass, the counties, not just the law enforcement would be gone. The county will be laying off a lot of people and it's gonna be scary, because nobody can tell us how we will recruit that money. And it will affect the levies throughout this county, so.
And levies can go up with the increase of property value.
Exactly right, and it can go down.
Go down.
Um, to answer your question, oh, um, the way the levy's done, certain percentage goes to power levy, certain percentage to law enforcement. And certain percentage to the library. Um, that's voted on every five years.
So we vote on the percentage that goes to each?
Yeah, it's, yes. Well, we don't, we vote on the levy as a whole. I think the commission has, you can go and say. That the levy's gonna get, I'm just, I don't know the number right off the top of my head. The, the fire levy is looking good. We're gonna cut it down to five percent. But the deputies are barely making payday, payroll month to month. We're gonna up it three. And then same thing with the library, you can up them. That's up to the county commission to come up, that would be put on the ballot to be voted for.
We can change it any way we want to.
Every five years.
Every five years.
We can change it any way we want to, designated.
Yes.
But it can only be done every five years.
Every five years.
Correct.
Yes.
And it's like, so it goes on the ballot. We make a decision, it goes on the ballot.
Yes, ma'am.
It's the voters. Okay.
Yes.
I'm just trying to understand it so I can.
But the, to be honest with the, the commission, you know, Ruth and I talk about this all the time, especially, you know, talking about the property taxes and all this and that. You know, it's scary for counties, um. Taking, taking away and expecting more out of us. And I know the commission's got a lot of hard decisions, you know, I understand P I is going up five percent. And then there's another chance that it's going up ten to fifteen percent more after that on municipalities and, and counties. So it's gonna make everything work and I, I don't, I would not wanna sit in your three seats because, again, just like what Ms. Allison said. Guys, I just gave a test. I'll just break it down this way. We gave a test, because I, I have two deputies that I'm gonna be open. Um. I had eleven, thirteen people show up. I had eleven that passed, and we gave the test, the PT test the other day, I had two show up for the PT test. And they both failed. Now, I'm, I am going to give it to them again, and I'm gonna call these people, but, and I'm just gonna be honest with you, they said, Sheriff, with all due respect, I think you're running a good ship over there, and love your guys, you've got good equipment and stuff, but he goes, I can go to Oak Hill and make over fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars more a year, and I said, I understand, brother. And I, and the same with my younger deputies that go on places, we've had them leave the state police, federal jobs, whatever, I get it, I understand it, but.
Are you saying you guarantee they'll stay if they get a raise?
I can guarantee nothing, Tommy.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just.
But I'm.
I throw that out there.
No, 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 Mr. Louisa, I'm, I, I'll be honest with you.
I heard, we heard different people all the time, it's just, it's, it's.
But, you know, I think all of us sitting in this room right now, we look at different things and different reasons. I've had deputies that took a pay cut to come here, because they want to wear the black and gray, they want to go out and represent the county, they want to be a bigger playground, you know, and I tell you this, and I say it all the time, my men and women, and not just the deputy sheriffs, I'm talking all my staff, they work their butts off, they do a good job, and I, and that's my job to fight for them, and I know, you three that sit on this, you know, I try not to sit there and beat it to death and do this and that, you three know and what, and how dangerous this job is. And, and again, Mr. Celebrity, hallelujah again, because over a million dollars in savings on the jail bill, and, and hey, and then we look at another forty thousand, so take, when, when you three sit down and go over budgets, and I know what Anthony asked for, for his office, and, and I know what I'm asking for, I, you know, I, my, I was worried about whatever people asked, this is my job to do this. And my women, men and women who work for my office are top notch, and they put in a lot of hours, not just deputies, the other side, you think about the tax office, we didn't have good people over there and, and people in leadership roles over there and stuff. It could be bad, and I get good, I used to get a lot of bad calls, complaining, but I'm getting good calls, and we've worked on stuff that Allison's came up with about these Airbnbs, we've worked on that stuff, so there's a lot of stuff going on. I appreciate your time, and again, I'm not, again, I came in here saying, I'm not gonna, y'all know, you're very three, all three are intelligent, you know.
I've been hearing good things about Anna in particular, I wanted to say.
Thank you.
She's done a lot of working with our office to get things straight.
Yes, ma'am, and she keeps me up on all that stuff, I mean, I've heard a letter, and basically, I'm kind of upset, but again, it's, um, this county, I'm trying to get everything we can, but they worked it out, it's working good now, you know, and that's my job, not just to share, I'm the treasurer, and I try everything I do, because I know it affects what you three decisions are, and what you're gonna be able to do for my office and other offices. But again, with Anthony's helping with the over a million dollars, that's awesome.
Half a million.
It might be a million Tommy's done, so.
I didn't want to correct the sheriff, I was just gonna say it.
I was just gonna let you say it, I was saying. Didn't want to interrupt you.
A million, I take that, but anyway, it's, it's good savings, and then the other forty-some thousand, now I hope that never happens again. You know, because that's stuff that I could use for the by deputies.
It's not gonna happen again under this administration.
And, and we worked through that, but, um, again, I appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, and Mr. Brenneman, the chief will get up with you and give you the cost, how much it costs to work on some of these vehicles and stuff. Majority of them are still on warranty, which is good, it's just gonna be oil change, brakes, tires, stuff like that.
I do want to clarify one thing.
Okay, yeah.
To see whether, I mean, you said you got a hundred and nineteen thousand comes from, will come from the levy.
Okay, go ahead.
Is that, where the property tax increased and the levy went up, levy went up?
No, no.
It's the same amount.
No, a hundred and nineteen is the increase it would be on that levy if we gave them the pay raise.
None of that's considered a levy.
No, okay, none, none, we don't have any yet.
Okay, alright, I was just, I was just curious.
Yeah, that, that, when I said the increase, that's what the increase we're looking at, if the pay raises were granted to the commission.
Okay.
Now, do we know what, we haven't got it yet, we should be getting here soon.
I thought maybe you was anticipating, you guys, okay.
I'm gonna be honest with the three commissioners, the tax and stuff hasn't been bad. Now, is that change, Lord only knows.
Alright.
It goes long as it goes.
You guys have any more questions?
Thank you, Mr. Brenneman.
Alright, thank you, let's take a break before we get started with WVU. I knew you'd be ready.
Ready, alright. Hey, Mike, can we sit down and talk this week sometime, or we meet next week?
Okay.
Yeah. It's a lot of fun. Tough this time of year, because everybody's got a, a great reason for the money. Our biggest thing, my biggest thing is.
Thank you, are you feeling better? We all had it too, man. Well, Ruth, Ruth and Amy and I and Michelle all had it at the same time.
That's good. The, the first page, this is how I think Ruth likes for us to present this, this is, this is both the Western University Extension Service, our funding bodies, which is, is you all and the Board of Education are combined there on this. If you'll look to the next page, the county commission budget, I'm not requesting any additional money than we had in the previous, and as, as the sheriff was just saying, the next page, the Board of Education, we are very fortunate to be running on the Board of Education levy and get that to, to combine with what we ask you all for. So on the back page of, of that very front page, so we're, we're, if we look at last year, you know, I hope this year we can get back up and running with the COVID easing up, but I was, I was twenty-six thousand under budget that I didn't spend, and that's because our, our colleagues were kind of held at bay, just to be honest with you. And so hopefully this year we can get that back up and be able to get moving around. So no additional, and I'll be as conservative as I can.
Pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Yep. Where's the sheriff? Just teasing, Mike.
Just to kind of give you all, here's some, here's a little, we send out this kind of some brief update, what's going on. Lauren wanted to be here today, but she had a doctor to come, she had to.
He was really responsive when I had to move everybody last time, so I appreciated that.
Yeah, I appreciate you working.
I didn't have your number, but I, I contacted her, I was like, I need to tell him, we gotta move that briefing, and she's like, well, he's sick anyway, so.
That was my second rant. First one tried to kill me, and the second one was kissing me, thank goodness.
First one did try to take him out, and this one's just a.
No, I don't have any questions. Oh, I finally found my exhibit A, sorry about that, y'all.
Thank you, thank you.
And just as a matter of record-keeping, I wanted to go ahead and move that we postpone number, item number three on exhibit A to March second, just because I hadn't had a chance to review the letter Amy gave it to me.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We got on our housekeeping, ma'am clerk.
I think so, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so on the, the salary discussion, I'd like to move that we go into executive session, because there are some personnel-specific items I'd like to raise as we go through it, and we'll come out and discuss all the general stuff and make any decisions we need to make. Alright, so we'll go into executive session at our ten thirty-nine. Alright, get started again. We'll discuss the raises for the, for our dispatchers at the nine-one-one center, it's something that has been a concern for a while, that our dispatchers are largely underpaid. We evaluated the current salaries of all of our dispatchers and commensurate with their numbers of years of experience. And we also reviewed the budget to see where we could find raises. We learned in, during that review that our dispatchers have been paid since probably somewhere in the nineties, early nineties for four dollars, for four hours of work that they were not performing, and that was some guidance that came out to a commission previous that does not comport with today's rules and regulations, so the raises that we have discussed will still amount to a raise, but it won't be as great an amount as you would think based on the hourly wage, but because of that four hours, because we will no longer be paying for work not performed. But we are going to be paying for the good work performed, so we discussed standardizing the salaries and the current starting salary with the raise that we contemplate would go from ten sixty-nine per hour to twelve sixty-nine per hour. The, after six months or successful completion of training and of the probationary period of six months, that salary would increase to thirteen dollars and nineteen cents per hour. The people who were making around that amount were making, I think, what, eleven nineteen, something like that, and then and then we have individuals who have some significant experience who are making thirteen sixty-nine an hour. So, to be specific, since, since it's different per name, we have a vacancy, and of course, the entry level jobs, we have two new hires. What's, did you find out what Arlie's last name is? Okay, so we have a new hire, Arlie is a uncommon enough first name that I think will know who it is. His salary would be twelve sixty-nine an hour, Stephanie Angius, also brand new hire, twelve sixty-nine an hour, and we have a vacancy, once that's filled, that person would make twelve sixty-nine an hour. Those who will be making thirteen nineteen an hour will be Woodson, Bonham, and Bowers. And then those who will be making thirteen sixty-nine an hour are Blankenship, Martin, Rogers, and Humphreys. All of the other dispatch personnel will receive a two-dollar-an-hour raise. But again, it won't necessarily equate to two full dollars an hour, just because they were getting paid for four hours that they weren't working previously, so it will still be a raise, but it just won't be as substantial as it sounds. Looks like over a dollar an hour raise for somebody who's making seventeen an hour now, so. Anyway, so I propose that we approve those raises as stated, I move that we approve those raises as stated for those individuals and, and the rest of the dispatchers.
Second.
Which paper? Okay, so effective March fifteenth pay period. Can you second? All those in favor? Are there any questions or discussions? Alright. Motion to adjourn? Alright. No, I did, I, no, I said, do I have one here, you're right, you're right. You're the only one among us who can hear.